Good morning. I'm trying to figure out the date here. January 28th, 27th?
January, that's it.
January, July.[13.91][13.91][laughter]
It was cool this morning. It was cool.
That was just to wake you up to see if you're alert. July. Good Lord. All right, City Manager.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Today is a, I think, a very important day for us. We've had some good presentations from each of the departments and good discussion around the table. What I'd really like to do is get us to focus in on the specific recommendation, item by item, and identify in each of the areas whether we see this as a, is it the item that we want to be talking about? Do we want to address it through a mill levy increase or do we want to address it through a cut? I know that there's a tremendous amount of pressure, and I apologize for sending the letter yesterday, just outlining things and not being pedantic, but I know there's a significant amount of pressure on everybody from their constituents that they don't want to see any sort of mill levy increase, and I understand that. The fact is, we're in a very difficult situation, and if we don't ignore it, it's not going to go away. So, I am hoping that by the end of the day, that Jeff can lead us through a discussion of each of the items on the worksheet, and a specific and individual determination can be made on all of those items, and at the end of this, we'll be very close to having a balanced budget and direction from you. So, I appreciate how difficult this situation is, but this is a situation that's been in the making for a long time, and we are living in a time of very tight resources, not just here in Topeka, but around the country. And we've seen situations in cities like the city of Detroit where it was just very difficult for people to make decisions they didn't make them, and now the decisions are going to be made for them. I'm not saying we're in that situation, but as indicated, based on the 2014 budget as presented, which is really a stable budget from last year, just recognizing contractual obligations that need to be met, if we do not address this issue, we will end up the year with a negative general fund balance, and that is a very bad place to be. So, at this point, unless there's any questions of me, I would like to turn the presentation over to Jeff. Jeff can review where we're standing today and then walk through each of those items. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any questions for the City Manager before we get started? Any questions, concerns, or comments? Okay. Yes, Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Chair. City Manager, I know that as all, we all have been receiving emails talking about the current financial condition of the city. Could you elaborate a little bit of, just briefly, on maybe how we got here? I know that you've said this before, but I think that it's important for people to understand.
Thank you, Councilmember De La Isla. Since 2008, when the world ended as we know it, and I don't say that jokingly, as we went into the recession, I think everybody expected it to be similar to what we experienced in the early 2000s, where it was a little bit of a blip and a correction. 2008, the air came out of the bubble in a very big way, and it really changed the way the economy works now. Is that the new reality or not? Who knows? But it's going to be well. It's been a very long recovery. Most communities had gotten in the habit, and Topeka was the same way, is that they looked for one-time monies to fix blips in the economic conditions. And we really stopped spending money on things like police cars and IT replacement and many of those types of funds. We also started becoming dependent on some of the reserve funds, especially the general fund reserve. And last year, the budget itself was, had a planned reduction of the general fund by several million dollars, and in addition to that, we had taken some money out of the debt service fund to balance the budget. Those are unsustainable activities. It is our objective at this time to address the problems as they need to be addressed and position us so that as we go forward in the future, we can be a competitive organization. You can't continue not to give raises to people. You can't continue to not provide the resources to people, or you will find yourself in a situation where your best and brightest employees leave the organization to go to other places. And I think what's difficult is that there are communities all around the country right now that have done all the right things since 2008, and they're now going forward, and they've put this behind them. I don't think that Topeka's alone and where we're at. In fact, there is a lot of cities that are like this. It's up to us right now just to understand that we made some viable decisions in the past. The economy didn't act in a manner similar to how it has acted in the past, and that's why we're in the challenging situation we are today.
Are you finished?
I just have one more.
Okay. Continue.
Thank you, ma'am. The last question that I have, could you elaborate a little bit on how the state has affected our budget? If it has at all?
Yeah, actually, let me turn that to Jeff on a more wider basis.
So, we have, Madam Chairman, good morning.
Good morning.
We have really kind of two issues from the state. One is the performance of the state economy in general and how that's impacted Topeka. And then the second piece is how the state economy has affected the state budget, which has affected the city's budget. And one very interesting thing when we look at, well, to the big picture, the state economy has suffered in the same way that the local economy has, and the state of Kansas's fortunes are really no different than Topeka's. In fact, in many ways, Topeka is maybe a little bit more insulated than the state's economy as a whole, because the state's economy is very dependent upon very cyclical industries, such as aircraft manufacturing and those kinds of things. The natural reaction of the state legislature over the history of the state, when times have been tough, is to shrink the amount of money it shares with local units of government. And so, in the past, we had items in the budget that were relatively significant, that were collections of taxes at the state level that were redistributed to cities and counties at the local level to be deposited in the general fund and to be used for general purposes.
Jeff, can you give us an example of that for the people at home?
Sure.
That would be helpful, because they'll ask me that, and I couldn't explain that. Just a quick example.
There was a program that existed back in the day called the Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction Fund, L A V T R F, as I recall, and the state legislature decided at some point in the 90s that local property tax levies were too high, and they wanted local units of government to reduce their property tax levies. So, the state created a fund where the legislature appropriated money into that fund each year, and then that fund was distributed based upon a formula to local units of government, and those monies were theoretically used to effectively subsidize local government operations and drive down property tax levies. Well, every time the state found itself short of money, they would underfund the L A V T R F fund. And so, cities which had been dutifully basing their budgets upon this promise of a transfer would find themselves in a situation where the state, which of course is six months off of our budget cycle because of where their fiscal year ends, would find themselves in a situation where the state would cut the funding that it had promised, and the city would have to make that up effectively mid-year because of the offset in the cycle. The last time the state got itself into pretty significant trouble in the earlier part of this decade, they eliminated those transfers completely, and there was some promise that they might come back when the fortunes of the state returned, but to date, those monies haven't come back, and nobody really expects them to do so. The last kind of example of this was the so-called SLIDA, which some of you who've been on the council for a while may remember, where the state reduced taxation on personal property. That had a direct impact on local government collections of those taxes at the local level, and the state promised to effectively, again, collect money at the state level, redistribute it at the local level to buffer the loss of that. And the idea from the state level was by taxing machinery and equipment less, that that would encourage more manufacturing-type industries to come to the state. Again, one of those deals where the legislature recognized that there would be a negative impact on local units of government, put a program in place to buffer that, and then unfunded the buffering program. So, you know, they have their own challenges, and ultimately, the taxpayers, the state of Kansas, pay the bills regardless of whether they're state or local. But those impacts statewide have both direct and indirect impacts on where we sit today. But it's very interesting, if you look, you know, if you go back to, say, 1993, 20 years ago, and look at what that budget looked like, you know, we might, we would have seen multiple millions of dollars coming into the city's general fund from state transfers that don't exist today.
Okay. You're welcome. Karen?
That was a really good starter question. Thank you. And to follow up on that, just to set the stage for us, at, not long ago, City Manager, you let us know that we were in trouble with the 2013 budget here in the city of Topeka, but that you were working with department heads to take steps to bring it in even and perhaps even with extra money for the fund balance. Could you refresh us on where we are on that for this year?
Well, we have solved the 2013 budget several times, and we are going to, at the end of this 2014 session, need to take a look at reducing some costs, again, in the 2013 budget in this case. And once again, I'll have Jeff maybe identify some of the things that have occurred, but we're confident, we know for sure, that we're going to end the 2013 budget balance, but it's been a challenge, just because as we've continued to collect information, the information has been a little softer. A lot of it, a lot of it has to do with just the timing of information that comes to us from the state in terms of investments and other things, but Jeff, you want to touch on that just a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, you all read the article in the paper yesterday related to the county and the fact that it's seeing a challenged balancing in its budget, and we're seeing the exact same trends here. So, as we came to you, well, last week or the week before, I don't remember, and kind of gave you a refresh on 2014 projections, we found that our 2014 projections were actually a little better than our revised 2013 projections. So, we continue to see as we get more data, as we go through the fiscal year, that we have revenue sources in 2013 that are softer than they were in 2012. And I keep walking into Jim's office, and at some point, he asked me to stop, because every time I walked in, it was bad news, and saying, "Look, you know, we, we're not making headway as we get May's data and June's data. We're not, we're not really making headway against our forecast." And so, we're, you know, it is going to be a struggle to get to the end of 2013 balanced. The good news is, is it's July. We have time to resolve it. We continue to watch it very closely, but we're struggling with the same things that you saw the newspaper talk, talked about the county yesterday.
Thank you. Is that all, Karen? Okay. And I just, I just want to remind everyone, I remember when, to the old, maybe some of the older members, when City Manager Dan Stanley came to us and said, "You know what? Things are not looking good." I don't know if you remember that, Harmon, but he did sit me down and say, "The future does not look good." Of course, he was on his way out too, so, but he did, he did, he was real honest about it, and he said, "It's going to be very challenging," you know? And I think that's when we wanted to really make sure that we got a City Manager that was...
Just by "to," you didn't mean I'm on my way out also, did you?[798.16][798.16][laughter]
No, he was, he was just...
Always checking.
Just wanted to clarify.
Not funny. No, he was just temporary, temporary City Manager, but he was, he did work at the state level, and he was looking at our budget and numbers and figures and working with Pam, so. We've heard this for a while. I don't know about other council members, but I have shared that with my council members, and I just want to say this. I attend a lot of NIA meetings, and to my constituents, they ask, and they tell me, "Don't raise, you know, the mill levy." And, but then they also tell me they want services to stay, stay the same, if not better. And so, I kind of let them know that, you know, "Well, then, we might have to raise the mill levy," and then they say, "We understand." So, I think just the education part, Michelle, that was a good opener this morning in this January, January weather, so. Elaine?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. In your letter, Jim, that you indicated that 75 cents out of every dollar spent relate to police, fire, court, and prisoner fees. When was the last time that our city employees did not get a raise? 2007, you say, was when everything changed as we know it. We know the state employees haven't gotten a raise for seven, going on eight years now. So, and, you know, I know your comment is losing the best and brightest, but I know that the state is also surviving, and we're not hearing a lot of public outcry. So, when was the last time that city employees did not receive a raise?
Well, Councilmember, if I can answer that in a little bit of a different way. There is a, and I don't want to get into an argument that I don't know the answers to. I mean, it's a bad position to argue from, but I think there are a lot of statements and assumptions being made about what's actually happening at the state in terms of employees, and I think there's more moving parts that have resulted in people making more money, whether it's reclassifications going from one, from one classification to the other. But I don't, I don't know enough about it. I'm just saying that as I'm out in the marketplace, I hear a lot of comments about that, so, but...
Well, it's true. I'm a state employee, and it's true. They haven't received an increase since 2007.
Right. So...
A step or an increase. I mean, you know, a raise or a step.
As far, and I should probably focus on what I do know, and the city employees, there was, there was a small raise, that a 1%, I believe it was a 1% raise, that went across the organization last year. I will tell you that if we don't, we are obligated to give raises based on the contracts.
Contracts, right.
We've talked a lot about that. We do have a classification of people who aren't covered under an agreement, and we've identified as a discussion point, too. Do we, do we give a raise to those people? I believe the raise was in about a 2% range to be consistent with the remainder of the workforce. And we've outlined that as a discussion point. Up or down vote? Do you want to give the non-union people a raise, or do you not want to? To be honest, if we don't give it to them, I'm okay with that, because it helps us get to our number. What the impact is on individual people, that's an individual decision, and, but we can't make, we can't make decisions today based on individual decisions. We have to make a decision based on what's best for the organization. Not giving people raises is a non-sustainable way to operate as an organization. At some point, it's going to stretch and it's going to break. Whether we're there or not, I'm not commenting on it. I don't know. I've only been in this community for a year. I believe that it is absolutely vital for us to get through this year so that we can continue to increase the efficiency of this organization, remove redundancies. I would love to have not had to deal with this issue for a year, so that I could have really truly gotten to know the organization. I know a lot better today than I did 11 months ago, but I haven't, but we're just getting there. So, I can't really fully answer the question. What's happening at the state is challenging. What's happening at the city is challenging. We need to make our decision and go forward.
Well, I have a stepdaughter that works in Department Administration, and according to her, and according to the rest of the administration, law enforcement in the state just this year got their first raise in seven years. So, the Highway Patrol.
I accept, I accept all of that. I'm saying I don't know enough about it to comment on it. I'm just saying what I hear. What's happening, it is a, it's a difficult economy in general. It's a very difficult economy for public sector. I believe that we have to do everything we can as an organization to get through where we're at, so we can position ourselves for a pathway to a better future.
So, one final question. So, what'd you say in how we got here would be one thing that we have given raises ever since the recession occurred to the labor unions?
No. I don't believe that's how we got here. I think at the beginning of this process, and certainly we could go through it again today, we made a lot of decisions in terms of making expenditures, in terms of even catching up on some things that we hadn't in the past. We made some decisions to increase expenditures. At the same time, we didn't make a decision to give corresponding increases in revenue. Therefore, because we did that, we took all of the reserves out of this organization, and what we're suffering from today is we don't have enough revenue to support the expenditure decisions that we've made. Whether they came from increases and raises based on contracts, or whether they came from buying police cars, increasing the amount of the police force, making certain decisions throughout the entire organization, I don't think there's any one thing that should be blamed. A lot of decisions have been made over the last several years, I could say 20 or 158, that maybe we're not as disciplined as they needed to be. When I, when I sat in this room for my original interview, I said, "We all recognize that we're in a difficult time, and I'm asking you, if you hire me, trust me, I'm going to make, I'm going to make recommendations that you're not going to like, but you hired me to be a professional manager. Let me manage, and if you don't want to do that, then maybe this isn't the best, maybe this is the best partnership." We're at that point. We're there today. I'm making a recommendation to you that you are not going to like. It comes simply down to one of two decisions. Raise, increase, raise taxes or cut public safety. Neither of those choices are popular. What we ultimately recommended was a hybrid approach, where we raised taxes enough to cover the cost of the public safety share of the budget cuts, and we will cut the remaining, the remaining portion of the necessary tax cuts throughout the rest of the organization. We estimate that number to be about $750,000, give or take, a couple, a couple $20,000.
So, one final question. Will the, will the city request mill increases next year if we give raises this year?
Deputy Mayor, Councilmember, I don't know what next year is going to be. The objective this year is to get us to a point where our revenue and our expenditures are in equilibrium, and then allow us as an organization to remove redundancies and cut costs. I hope not, but for me to sit here today and tell you to read my lips, "No new taxes," would be a bad idea. Didn't work so well for the last guy who did that.
Thank you. Okay, I appreciate that, and also, Elaine, you might further dig into the people that are not union that don't get raises, and that's even, you know, I've talked to the City Manager about our, some of our fire department, the upper heads, they haven't have raises, you know? And that is my fear, is that, that they're going to say, "You know what? This guy who's gotten a raise and increase, he's making almost as much as me. Why do I want this position with all of this responsibility?" And so, he's going to just, there's guys now talking about retiring and quitting because this guy, so what we're going to have is inexperienced people fill those upper positions, and, you know, and then, and then, you know, and I've talked to the City Manager about this, and I told him, you know, "I can understand this year, but I'll sure be looking next year to see where they need to be, and I will be advocating for that." You know, I understand this is tough, but at some point, we can't continue to tell them, "No, we've got people that want to retire. We want people that want to go back to the station," you know? And then what you're going to have is somebody in there that just wants it for a power trip. We don't need that, not with that particular department, you know, or any department. So, so, you know, when I, when I look at the zero cost of living that you've given us, this $1.6 million, I mean, to me, when I give raises, I want to give it to everybody and not just a certain amount of people, but that's the way it is.
Maybe that's the, like you said, the union contracts have been raises and the others haven't.
Exactly. And so, it's kind of out of our, out of our control. Did I see another hand before I call in? Karen? Karen?
I wanted to, to further clarify the issue of the raises, and maybe Pam can be the best help on this, or Jeff, just so the newer folks know, one of the reasons we went ahead and, and somebody else can do the specifics, but gave that 1% raise, I don't think the state workers dealt with this. We had to change the health insurance drastically, because that fund was in the hole, and when that happened, we drastically raised the employee contribution across the board to paying for their own health insurance, and so, they were in the hole. They not only had a raise the year before, more or less, but then, when we raised their contributions substantially, they were in the hole. They were making less, and their families were on edge. We've lost some people because of that as well, because they just couldn't swing it with no raise and an additional major cut of, what was the typical additional cost? $100 or $200 a month? You know, we raised the deductibles, we raised the co-insurance.
Which should have been done a long time ago.
I'm just saying.
Right, exactly.
In terms of that net over this seven years that you're talking about, that happened about two years ago, and it was killer. And so, one of the reasons in the union contracts, as well as for the non-union employees, that we did something was that to help them even break even at where they were because of health insurance. And I just think that's fair to consider as we look at whether they had a raise or not over that period.
And the fund is, I attended the healthcare committee Wednesday morning, and the fund is doing fine now.
But that's because, that's because it was in such trouble.
That was last year, not two years. That was last year that we were negative. What, that we put that...
2011.
2011?
2011, and then we took those drastic moves, but it involved a cost to our employees, the families, at the first year, and then we just added a little bit for the single employees to help beef that fund back up this year. But to have your deductible and co-insurance go from $2,000 to $3,000, and your monthly pay, and your monthly contribution out of your paycheck that you had before, go up by, I think, more than $100, Pam?
It depended.
Right.
Depended, but yes.
It depended, but if you could quickly, so the new folks know what our employees dealt with...
It depended on which dependent plan you were on.
Correct.
By far, the family was the one that jumped the most. I think they went up almost $350 for payment. If you were just a basic single, then that's when we put in the $25 or $50 a month that the employees, that to that point, the city had not charged for the basic single, and that just started this year. But there were significant jumps in the dependent care. We had not been keeping up with the current insurance market, and so, it was a hard hit that our employees had to take all at one time.
It was a hard hit that we had to take, because we put in a million dollars in that account to keep it afloat.
We, we took a million dollars from the general fund. We also took $870,000 from the risk reserve fund.
Exactly.
So, we put in an additional $1.8 million just to keep the health insurance fund liquid so that we could pay, continue to pay the claims that we were having processed. But we also, besides raising the premium charged to the employees, we also took the severe step of raising the deductibles from $1,500 up to $3,000, and also raising the office visit cost and that sort of thing. So, they're not just the money out of their pocket, but also charges that had gone up. Ms. Schwartz is right. The fund is in better shape now, but I'm not sure I'd say we're over the hump yet.
Right.
I'm a little more conservative than that. We are at the point, we do have $4 million in cash sitting in the fund currently as of, as of last week, but we are now at the point where the deductibles are being paid off, they're reaching their deductibles. This is usually the time we start to see the claim payments go out higher. So, the truth test is at the year end, when we've paid all the claims and all the costs for the year.
And the state is a bigger organization than the city, and then we've lost some people, because I know a lot of people, they've left their husbands or their whoever it works for the city on, and they've taken their family with their spouses, and so, guess what? We're going to have all that to contend with, and it's just a big, long process. But yeah, Karen is right. We did...
It was a net pay cut of maybe $5,000 a year to our employees that had families.
Yes, yes. Thank you, thank you, Pam. Pam, there's a seat over there by Chad. Can I ask you to sit over there? That way, you don't have to jump up every time we have a question. I know you might not want to sit by Chad this morning, but...[1704.01][1704.01][laughter] Thank you, Pam. That way, you'll be right there for us. I appreciate that. Any other questions or concerns? This is good conversation. Things that needs to be said? Any, any other questions or comments before we get started? Jeff, do you remember where we were before we got off on...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, great.
So, unlike the last few times I've seen you, I don't have any new bad news to share with you, but I did want to...
Great, that's excellent.[1735.33][1735.33][laughter]
I did, I did want to stage, since Monday, I did want to stage the discussion a little bit, and I'm going to talk about the two items that were, that were at your place when you came in this morning. So, the first is the, is the manager, or the letter that the City Manager sent you yesterday, and just kind of recap where we stand. And we're, we're going to spend a lot of time talking about general fund today, because that's the, that's the one that's, that's sick at the moment. We, you know, we start the day with the need to find about $6.5 million in either expenditure cuts or revenue enhancements to get us to balance for fiscal '14. The City Manager mentioned a second ago that three out of every $4 in the general fund go to public safety-type activities, like these fire, municipal court, and prisoner fees. That leaves us with about $22 million of expenditures in the general fund in the recommended budget that are non-public safety-related. When we break that $22 million down, there are a number of items in there that I would classify... classify as quote unquote nondiscretionary. To give you two examples, one is the payment to Shawnee County related to the transfer of parks and rec. The city and the county have a contract, and that contract specifies a dollar amount that we have to pay over to the county next year to fund that operation. Another very big chunk of money that's, that's well hidden in the general fund is streetlights. I'm not talking about traffic signals, I'm talking about the, the streetlights you tell your kids to come home in the summer when the lights come on. We pay a very large sum of money, I think it's 1.8 million dollars without looking a year for those streetlights. Many, many of those are leased, meaning that even if we didn't turn them on, we'd still be paying West Dar for the privilege of having access to those lights. And then kind of going all the way down to something relatively small, in the finance department budget, for instance, we have a 12 or 13,000 a year we pay for armored car services to get cash safely from city facilities to the bank. So there's a, there's a whole variety and a whole list of items that I think most reasonable people would say that a business of this sophistication has to do, or we're bound to do by contract. There's also a number of general fund kind of overhead departments that generate revenue. And so if we cut those departments and we cut the individuals that generate that revenue, you're putting that revenue at risk. So for some of those departments, building inspection would be a great example. If you cut building inspectors, you're likely both cutting expenditures, but you're cutting the ability to generate fees from that, from those activities as well. And so when you take those into account too, you get down to the point where you've got about 13 of that 22 million dollars that I would consider to be discretionary. Now, that, that means there's still real people doing real jobs and real costs, but you could look at those for reductions and say, these are things that we're not going to do anymore, we're not gonna have a city attorney anymore, we're not gonna have a finance director anymore, those kinds of things. So if we, if we, if we exclude public safety from the discussion, we're talking about taking six and a half million dollars out of 13. And I, I can't think of any organization that I've ever worked with or that I know that could suffer a 50% cut in one year and survive, still be standing at the end of the next year. I've joked about this a little bit, but we literally would not have folks left to cut paychecks for the, for the police officers and firefighters that remained at that point. So it's, we're talking about a very significant challenge if we, if we take public safety out of the discussion to begin with. On the flip side, on the revenue side, and we've talked about this a few times, more than 60%, more than $6 out of every 10 of our general fund revenues come from property taxes and sales taxes. Sales taxes, we have just now in 2012, basically bounced back to the point where our collections were the same on sales taxes on the one cent, excluding the new, the new taxes that the cities levy, to where we ended 2007, the last year before the recession. On property taxes, our assessed valuation for next year will finally exceed what the assessed valuation was in 2008, the last year before the recession. I would also note that when we look at the components of the assessed value increase between this year and next year, it's all related to new construction. There was actually no increase in the value of the base assessed valuation across the community. So all of the increase for next year was related to either new construction coming online or potentially things like tax payments rolling off. So we still have not really seen the housing economy rebound to the point in Topeka where there's price inflation, which would cause the assessed valuation to increase. So those two primary revenue sources, for all intents and purposes, put, give us the purchasing power where we were back before the recession kicked in. We continue to see sales tax struggle. In fact, when you read the consensus revenue forecasting report for the state, the group of experts that the state relies on for its revenue forecasts, they're also seeing very soft sales tax growth statewide. And I don't have any reason to believe that Topeka wouldn't, would be any different than that. So we have this, this dual challenge of a very large component of our general fund being related to the highest council priority, at least the historical council priority, and the funding sources to pay for that, the primary ones being relatively flat. The council has ultimate control over the amount of property taxes collected. The state has no adware property tax caps. Sales taxes are a completely different story. We're not only constrained by statute and rate, but of course, any change in that rate requires a vote of the people, which takes time. And then it also takes time to implement, and then it also takes time for those revenues to come in the door. So a decision on sales tax today would likely benefit the 15 budget rather than the 14 budget, we might end up with a little 14. We do have some other large categories of revenues. And to kind of kick off the conversation today, we've taken the major programmatic changes that were included in your budget document. There are actually two spots now with the supplements we've given you over time. There's a specific tab in your budget book, and they're also behind each department, where we've suggested ways that the city could get the general fund to balance. And there's both revenue enhancements and expenditure reductions. And we wanted to take today, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, walk through each of those, get your thoughts and comments, and to the extent that we can come to consensus, we can start narrowing that gap from six and a half million down close to zero. So I want to start, if you don't mind, by talking about franchise fees. So the city charges franchise fees on the gas and electric utilities, the public utilities in the community. And the basic concept behind a franchise fee is those entities are generating a profit by using this, the public rights of way in order to have their transmission lines or trains or whatever you want to call it.
Jeff, is this what you're gonna be referring to?
I, I will be referring to that. I'm still actually in the, in the, in the manager's letter on page two.
If you'll take us with you as you go, okay? So we, we'll stay on track.
Can you just switch and just work kind of?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Why don't we switch to the recommended budget document that you just referred to? Because we just pulled out some concepts here.
Yep. So I'm, I'm three or four pages back in the city manager's letter to, to the page that looks like this. We, we created a tally sheet to effectively kind of help us get to balance and keep track. And I have it electronically, so if we start moving fast, we can keep track of it dynamically. So in addition to property tax levy, we've identified a, a number of potential other revenue sources in the general fund that fall into the large category. You know, we could spend a lot of time talking about, you know, increases in copy charges and those kinds of things, but we're not gonna get to six and a half million dollars by spending our time there. The city, as I mentioned, charges franchise fees on gas and electric. The, the franchise agreement with the different power gas companies give us different authority under which to increase or decrease those franchise fee amounts.
Can I?
Yeah, I'll jump in.
Deputy Mayor, I'd like to make a, obviously Justin Corporal, this one has led this, led this, this whole way, but maybe to the point of driving discussion. You all have a high level of familiarity with most of these things. You also have some strong opinions, maybe one way or the other, as to whether it's an appropriate way to proceed or not. I would like to recommend, in terms of driving this discussion, maybe Jeff can just introduce the concept. If you have any questions about what it is, what does it mean, what's the implications of it, we can talk about it. But I think the more important discussion is, do you support this move or do you not support this move? And hopefully, we can kind of walk through this and get, kind of put a check bark. And hopefully, what we say is, yes, we support this move. We want to increase the mill levy or, or cut costs, or actually, in this case, it'd be, do we want to support this particular revenue increase model? Or do we want to not? And if we say not in some of these things that generate revenue, we'll have to add to the bottom line and, and find revenue somewhere else. Is that okay, or does that, that works for me? Okay.
So in, in 30 seconds, let me walk down the, the items on this first page.
Well, and, and I just want to make sure, City Manager, I understand what you're trying to do, and I understand where you're trying to go. But I, I just want to make sure that everybody understands, like, the franchise fees and what it entails from our, from our part, from the city.
Agreed.
So I, I don't want to rush it to say, you know, because there's a lot of people watching. And education, 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 you know. Educating them is, to me, is going to be the most important thing, so when they come back, it's not a surprise. But I don't know if some of the new council members understand that as well. So I don't, I don't want to move too fast, but I do want to move fast.
I do want him to give a very brief overview of what it is, but I want us to get to the, to the discussion.
Okay.
Just shut up a second.
That's fine. So the, so the first, the first item on your list is a 1% increase in the gas franchise fee rate. That rate today is 5% of gross receipts. That is passed through directly to consumers on your bill. If you actually open your gas bill and look at it, you will see a specific line item where they break out fees paid. The city has the right on, I think it's 60 days written notice to increase this fee. So if you decided not to do this this year, that option remains on the table to you and it remains available mid-year as well. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jeff, if I may, ma'am. In your, in the letter here regarding the franchise fees, it is written that because entities that are exempt from property taxation and sales taxation typically are electric and gas consumers, franchise fees are an excellent way to export the cost of government service to non-property tax payers. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely.
Including from a, from a tax equity point of view, that appeals to you.
One of the challenges every capital city faces, you go, when you pick any capital city across the country, you go in and talk to them, and university communities have the same challenge, is if you look at the amount of land area of the city's 55 or 56 square miles that is exempt from property taxes, it is staggering. State government, churches, nonprofits, all of the kind of social service infrastructure that grows up, nonprofit infrastructure that grows up in capital cities, we can raise the mill levy as high as we want, and those folks will never be impacted by that. But every one of those entities, state government, the smallest nonprofit, they have water, they have sewer, they have electric and/or gas. And so the city has the ability to effectively pass on the cost of public services, in this case, in the general fund, by increasing the costs of those particular utilities and then having a portion of that flow through to our general fund. So if we increase the franchise fee on gas or electric, then everybody from the state of Kansas on down to the smallest nonprofit we talked about will be impacted by that. They will pay those fees, those fees come through to the general fund. And that means that those entities which don't contribute by paying property taxes to pay for government services are contributing indirectly through these, through these other means. In the case of our water and our sewer utilities, which we own, we'll talk about in a second, those utilities provide services outside the city of Topeka. In fact, our water through resale to, to wholesale customers gets nearly to the Nebraska state line. That's also another way where by passing those costs through, increasing the rates on those water and sewer utilities and passing some of that back through to the city in the form of pilot and admin fees, that we have the ability to quote unquote export the cost of our government services to folks that don't live here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Karen?
I caught that in the letter too, and I really appreciated it because I hadn't looked at it that way. I had done an, actually a kind of a blast for opinions from my constituents who said, raise property taxes if you need to, but don't raise my utilities. And so that had really been weighing on me. And I had asked you earlier what that would mean, and I didn't, to, to somebody's bill, and I didn't know, and I didn't get an answer. But if, if I'm right here, then if somebody, like my minimum utility bill in the summer for gas, when I've got everything off except my hot water heater, is about 23 bucks. So that means that in the summer, my bill would go up 23 cents?
Yeah, that's right.
With this proposal? Now, if it was really in the, in the, in the wind, in the middle of the winter, sometimes people's gas bills get up to, in my district anyway, with old houses, maybe 300 bucks. That means that that winter gas bill would go up three bucks?
That's correct.
Okay. And on an electric bill, many people's are, let's say, 50 bucks. It would go up 50 cents.
Right.
I really appreciate the, the thought of spreading it to those who are not paying property taxes because that helps. Would these increases also, I mean, geographically, where would a gas bill be spread, this increase?
Well, we, on gas.
Only to city residents?
Yeah, on gas and electric, our franchise only extends within the boundaries of the city itself. But it's a way to have state government, nonprofits, those kinds of folks who don't contribute to property taxes where homeowners in your districts do, to contribute to general government services.
So it's, it's every entity within the city is what you're saying?
On gas and electric, the franchise fee is every entity in the city that, that subscribes to those services, which is probably nearly everyone. And then on water and sewer, it's not only focused in the city, but it's focused outside the city who are customers in those utilities as well. We did, we did ask the gas and electric utilities to provide us with some average bill data. They've not been responsive to us. I, I will tell you, maybe as a proxy, that in the history of the franchise fee rebate program, the average rebate we pay to, to each individual that's participated in that is $70 a year. So your, your, your estimates of a few bucks here and a few cents there are really probably right, right on.
Well, if it's, if it's a direct pass-through of that 1%, then any individual can calculate what their share would be. And I didn't understand it that way. So that's very helpful as well.
Absolutely.
Do you know what percentage of this 580,000 and 600,000 are people who are, what the split is between bills on properties that are paying property taxes also and ones that aren't?
I don't have any idea. I don't, and I don't know that we.
Could get it.
Could even get that data. We'd be relying on the utilities to tell us.
But we know it's substantial.
I would think so.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy.
Okay.
So Madam Chairman, on, on gas franchise fee, the city has the right to raise that on 60 days written notice, and that can be done both within the budget process and without. The electric franchise fee on West Dar is really more of a time-sensitive issue. That franchise fee was written so that we only have the right to modify that franchise fee amount on the fifth anniversary and multiples of that fifth anniversary. And so we're, we're at that point this year in 2013. If we decided not to increase that rate today, we wouldn't have another opportunity to do so under our contract until 2018. So the electric franchise fee one is really more time-sensitive than the gas one is. On water and wastewater franchise fee, the city has the right to raise those admin fees whenever it wants, inside or outside of a budget cycle. You heard from the utilities folks, I would just encourage you to recognize that the only way you can export the cost of government services through this means is by also imposing a 1% rate increase on, on water and wastewater bills in order to pass this fee through. So if you, if you impose the franchise fee increase, or the admin fee increase in this case, and don't correspondingly increase rates on the water and wastewater side, all we're doing is making it more difficult for those utilities to pay for their operations and capital costs. So I, I, I think by voting for the 1% increase in water franchise and 1% increase in wastewater franchise, I, I would pose to you that what you're really doing is essentially committing to raising the rates on those utilities by that 1% as well. Then the last item on this first page goes.
Sorry, Karen?
Deputy Mayor, thank you. Just to clarify then, because I had reason to pull minimum bills the other day, if, if we did this on the water and wastewater, a minimum bill for water is $15 right now. So that means that bill would go up 15 cents. And, and a minimum bill on wastewater is $14.85. So it would, let's say, correspondingly go up 15 cents, but it would be everyone who is a user, whether it is a property taxpayer or not. And also, you said, outside the city limits, where those rates are a little bit higher. So that bump would just be a little bit more.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Before we go on, Jeff, when is the last time that, can you provide information? You don't have to do it now, or if you want to. When's the last time that we went up on any of these? Has it been a while?
Do you remember on, on electric and, and gas?
It's been at least five years, but I'm not sure, we can check in.
I, I just, you know, for the public, I want, you know, for five years on all of them, probably?
Well, water and wastewater administering fees, we've held them steady for the last two years, I think the year before that. So three years ago, we did raise the administering fees for the utilities into the general fund.
Okay. Thank you. Did you have questions? Mr. Harmon?
Thank you. I would, I would support, I'd make a motion to increase franchise fees for gas by 1% provided that we.
percent, provided that we maintain yet somehow figure out to streamline the franchise fee refund for people who otherwise qualify for home station property tax payers. I think, I think the two need to go hand in hand. Joanne Peeler had, had some, I think, great remarks Tuesday night about some of the redundancies and deficiencies in that system. So I'm, I'm currently raising franchise fee fees on a tax equity basis, provided we also maintain the franchise fee refund program.
Is, is, okay, there's been a, a motion. Do I have a second? There's been a motion?
Second.
Did I hear a groan over there? Are you, are you telling me that we can't do this?
No.
Okay. I thought we could. I was like-
I heard a groan, but I didn't.
Okay. Okay, I have a motion on the floor. Do I, and a second by Karen? Okay, discussion? Is that application, Pam, do you know, is that application our application that we just need to revise? Or is that like, does it, is it, is it something we put together?
To, to the utility company?
Uh-huh.
Yes.
So it's something-
We'll work to amend the contract with West Star.
So it's nothing like state or local, or, I mean, did we adopt that? Isn't, it's not an ordinance or something that we have to follow?
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, are we talking about the franchise fee program or the actual fees themselves?
The rebate program.
Not the fees, I'm talking about the application.
It's our program, hundred percent our program.
Right, it's our program, so, so we can, we can, okay, okay.
I'm sorry, I meant to raise the franchise fee.
No, I didn't make myself clear, I apologize. But I'm, and I'm looking at Chad, I think we're reading each other, but, so it's, it's ours to amend or whatever. Okay. So you would just need to draft something, and then do you bring it before the council to look at, or do we need to put a committee together, or? Well, just, just let us know. I just, I just didn't think there was a whole lot in that. I, I see you over there, City Manager. Go ahead.
Thank you. I agree, I think we've learned a lot about that program. There are certain requirements that we have with the utility companies that we need to meet certain information. We believe that there's a significant way to reduce costs on that, and so-
Okay.
-we're comfortable with that idea.
Okay, all right. Well, I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure before I voted that I knew how difficult or what it was. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed, same sign? Okay. And remember, this is just a, you got that, Jenny?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Can we move on?
Madam Chair, the last item on this page is related to the conversation that Mr. Harmon had with the group on Monday evening related to a modification of the transient guest tax funding. The second handout you have tonight, Budget Supplement Number Five, the very first item on that summarizes, hopefully accurately, Mr. Harmon, the, the changes that, that you had recommended to the committee's recommendation of the council. One of those was to restore the transfer from the transient guest tax fund to the general fund from eighty thousand dollars, which the committee recommended, to two hundred thousand dollars, which is what staff had requested and what we included in the recommended budget. So that's the last item on this, on this page.
Mr. Harmon, would you like to do anything with that?
Sure, I'll make the motion to restore the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty thousand to transient guest tax.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Michelle. Is there discussion? Karen?
I just want to throw out for discussion. I was trying to kind of get the ten-thousand-foot view and look back at all of the budget and, and what are our big-ticket expenses and so on, and which ones are essential services like, like police and fire and so on. And if we need two hundred thousand dollars, as we did for years-
Let's, let's stay to this motion, Karen.
Now, to shore up the general fund, which is what this motion would do, I, I can be okay with that. But the zoo's budget, and I, I think the zoo is wonderful, and I think it's well-run, and I think it's critical to our economic development and success as a city, but they have a two-point-five-million-dollar budget out of, out of our total, two-point-five-million in general fund. And they, they had, and I appreciate it so much, I'd come forth and said they thought they could help us save money on our budget by having the Friends of the Zoo help with some of the costs that were costing us general fund money. These are linked. We could still put two hundred thousand over and, and have it offset some of the costs of the zoo. But to add another hundred-and-twenty thousand to what we are allocating to the zoo, I don't think we need to do that. I think we need that two hundred thousand elsewhere. And so I, I don't mind adding it. If, if we need the other hundred-and-twenty thousand in the general fund budget, I'm okay with that, but I don't think the zoo, I think the zoo can, is, is on an upswing and could thrive without it. So this on paper here doesn't target the money at the zoo, but the conversation before did. So I'll just throw that out for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody that would like to comment to that? Pam?
I just want to point out that the transient guest tax may only be used for certain purposes. That's why it's targeted to the zoo, because it has to be used according to the charter ordinance and the statute. But the pot of the general fund is a pot of the general fund funding, and so you can designate the two hundred thousand from the transient guest to be used marketing for the zoo, and that two hundred thousand, I wouldn't pay that expense. It kind of gets blurred, but just to understand why it's always been targeted for certain purposes.
Thank you, Pam. City Manager, did you have a comment?
I just want to clarify, everything that you say is true in time. This year's budget specifically focused on that two hundred thousand dollars, and then we removed the hundred-and-twenty. If we don't address the hundred-and-twenty, we have to take it out of the budget somewhere else. So in time, we could continue to build up that capacity, but this year's budget is very specific, including both of those items.
Okay, Karen?
Let me respond then, because I'm just trying to struggle with these multiple moving parts. I will probably support this transfer right now into the fund and for the zoo, but when we get down to the Z's in expenses and they're offered to move money, I, I will probably support that as well to offset.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Do we know if the people that get funding from transient guest tax, like Visit Topeka and to put heads on beds, and what that fund was set up for originally? Would they be for this transfer to the general fund? I'm still confused as, as a newbie. We're taking money out of the transient guest tax fund that gets money from heads-on-beds taxes and putting it into the general fund? Is that what we're doing?
Councilman Harmon, would you like to respond?
Well, I think I'll defer to financial, technical aspects.
Okay, if I could have Pam respond?
We, we do-
If I could have Jeff respond?
Sorry.
Can somebody respond?
Madam Chairman, we do in fact make a transfer from the general fund, I'm sorry, from the transient guest tax fund to the general fund. That goes as, as a component of general fund revenue. We've not included a specific increment to the zoo's budget to absorb that, so the, the two hundred thousand transfers in recognition of the fact that the zoo does substantial marketing to get people to come to Topeka, to go to the zoo and do other things as well. And I, I can't speak for other people, but I can tell you that that transfer has historically been in the budget.
Absolutely. It, it has. And we're not doing something that we can't do because that's what that money is generated for. I, I just want to comment that I think Brendan's doing a, a great job, but he has not made it to the top of the hill yet. And I, I think if this money is going to help him, we want to continue to do that so he can continue to bring in, and he, he is bringing heads-on-beds tax money. Because I had a, a lot of people comment, you know, the different people that were from out of the state for the penguins, that was a big hit. The alligators are a big hit, and, and I'm just anxiously waiting to see what's going to happen next year. So I will support this. Elaine, were you through? Did you have anything else? Councilman Nathan?
This two hundred thousand in the, in the Harmon proposal, the majority of the hundred-and-twenty thousand over the eighty thousand that was recommended by the transient guest tax committee, we're taking that hundred-and-twenty thousand from what was originally allocated to Visit Topeka? Is that the way I'm-
Well, not, I don't know if you can say that's accurate. It's going to have to come from some allocations made to other recipients, which could include Visit Topeka, it could be Heartland Park, it could be the Expo Center, it could be who else have we given money to?
Wayfinding signs.
So we, we haven't identified who, where this is going to come from.
Okay. But in the, in the proposal, in the supplement that we're getting, it would come from Visit Topeka. I mean, that's the only one that goes down, so.
That's the, that's what you had motioned before.
Did you have proposed before?
I don't want to say it was a proposal, it's what you rec, or you said was an option.
Well, yeah, but in my own mind, as I, as I'm considering this, I mean, I'm realizing that somebody's allocation is going to have to go down, but I'm certainly not targeting necessarily Visit Topeka. Do we need to identify?
City Manager?
Just as a clarification, the, the conversation previous was to increase Heartland Park by a certain amount, increase the zoo transfer by a certain amount, and a specific reduction by two-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to the, to the Visit Topeka allocation. That was the, the vote that was taken or supported on Tu- Tuesday?
You brought that forward, Richard.
Monday.
Do we have those documents? I was looking for mine, I thought you gave us some. Do we have those, Jeff?
In, in terms of the transfer amounts, I'm sorry.
I thought Richard presented something, and that's where, where, is that where, I thought that's where Nathan got it.
Right, the very, the very first page of Budget Supplement Number Five is what contains the tally of the ins and outs based upon our conversation on Monday night.
But Richard, didn't you present something, or you just wrote it down? You didn't give it to everybody, you just kind of figured it within yourself?
Right.
Nathan?
But this is what-
I just wanted to clarify, I don't, it says that it was a proposal. This, Councilman Harmon said those were options. I don't know if he was endorsing those options, but he, those were the options that were presented. I don't want to-
Oh, and we didn't vote?
No, no, no votes were taken Monday night. I just threw it out there.
Okay.
I, in addition to that, I just wanted, on this issue, I'm a huge fan of the zoo as well. I, using the transient guest tax from that, we talked, Jeff spoke earlier about our projected sales tax revenues and how he thought they didn't, weren't going to differ much from what we've seen from the state. Well, the way they get, that we get those to differ from the state is through bringing things like wrestling tournaments and softball tournaments and, and marathons and that kind of thing to Topeka, which is done through Visit Topeka, is the primary tool that we have to do that. And, and that's also the primary vehicle that drives the transient guest tax. So I think when we're considering any transfers or any reallocation of that money away from what was originally proposed by the, by the transient guest tax committee, it's important to realize that, that any move from, from probably the bid fund and Visit Topeka is, is going to, I mean, that's a move away from giving ourselves any future, you know, grace in that area, because those are the pri, two primary drivers of the transient guest tax to begin with.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. I, I would agree, but we also set what we give them and what we give Visit Topeka or any entity, so we have, I would agree with that. And so I, for, as for myself, we have to look at what's going to help across the board, you know? And I think they've increased their amount from last year, is that right, Richard?
True.
Are you, are you the president on, or the chair on the guest transit?
Yeah.
A Visit Topeka, didn't they increase what they asked for from last year a substantial amount?
Uh-
I thought, I thought they did.
Yeah, I, I didn't write that file with me, I didn't think we'd be getting into that today, so I apologize after that, but.
You sit in here, something?
Pam, do you remember?
We have actually, Visit Topeka's primary, the one million fifty thousand, is actually a twenty-five-thousand-dollar decrease from last, from this year's allocation. What they did was they switched the twenty-five thousand from their Visit Topeka line to their bid fund. So it's-
Oh, that's right, okay.
-they're asking for the same amount of money as what they have in thirteen. They've just chosen that they need more money of the bid fund to attract them.
Is there any other discussion on this? Comments, questions, clarifications? Karen?
Well, along those lines, that was a really good question. When would be, if, if we do vote to move money out, when will be the appropriate time to readdress the transient guest fund itself and balance it?
I like Mr. Harmon's proposal that he brought to the table on Monday. I don't know what I did with it, but I liked it.
Well-
So I, I don't know, I don't know if that's a question for, for staff or-
Well, we just have to balance it, we, we as a group-
Absolutely, absolutely.
-is bodying to address it, so.
Yeah. At some point prior to budget adoption, we're going to have to figure that out. So I'm just, I'm just bringing it up because it's, it's on the next item, the City Manager memo that he sent out yesterday, so. But Nathan's comments, Elaine's comments, and Karen's comments are all relevant in terms of looking comprehensively at the entire transient guest tax allocation, but I'm just bringing this up as a line item because that's in the City Manager's recommended proposal in 2014.
Okay, Pam?
Just a point on the transient guest. Any of these can be changed by the council, except for the sunflower soccer, because you have specifically dedicated one percent for their special assessment of building. The contract with Great Norland Station and Riverfront Park, those are contracts made by the council or choices made by the council. They can be changed by the council. So just to let you know, you don't have to cut those off limits if you want to change something.
Nothing is set in stone.
The only money that you can't touch, you could if you want to pass another charter ordinance and stuff, but that would be more difficult when we give the sunflower soccer.
Yep, thank you. Are there any other questions or concerns?
Just so I'm understanding this right, the, I believe there's a motion on the floor to approve that additional one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand-dollar transfer. And not address anything else in the transient guest tax fund. I think this is something that we should address as a whole at the time and do it altogether because once we move that one-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars out there, we can't move anything into the transient guest tax fund. It's the transient, that's, it only has one source of funding. So if we take the one-hundred-and-twenty thousand out of it, we can't correct this later. I mean, we-
Yeah, we can vote to put it back in.
Well, we can vote to put it back in, but once it's moved out, we can't, we can't do anything else other than move the monies around inside of here.
Right.
So.
That's correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you.
What's the motion? There's a motion to add to restore the-
Jenny, did you write the motion?
Restore the transient guest tax transfer, one-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars.
And you made that motion?
Yes.
Are there any more, is there any other discussion?
Just a second.
Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion, comments, questions? If not, there's been a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, raise a right hand. All those opposed, same sign? Did you get that, Jenny? Did you get that, Jenny? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on.
Madam Chairman, I, I would, before we flip the page, I would, I would ask the committee to consider the concepts of increasing administrative fees on the water and wastewater utilities by one percent, again acknowledging that, that we would ask the council to come back and, and approve a corresponding rate increase to compensate the funds for, for the loss of that income.
Okay, and-
I would make a motion to increase.
Okay, there's been a motion by Michelle.
I would second that.
Seconded by Councilman Nathan. Seconded by Councilman Nathan. It's been moved and seconded, it's open for discussion, comments? Councilman Harmon?
Thank you. Along that line, in this, on the rate increase, on the possible rate increase, would that be both to city and non-city consumers?
Yes, sir.
We couldn't, we couldn't pass that just to non-city consumers?
I think we have challenges with the way the rates are structured in segregating between city and non-city, the one thing we could look at is whether the premium charge to non-city customers is the correct amount, so, if that makes sense. So changing the rate, my recollection is, tell me if I go astray, Pam, the rate structure is such a way that non-city rates are simply a premium to city rates, so if we modify the city rates, those are passed through, am I on the right track?
That's correct, they're usually doubled whatever the city rate is.
Right, so, the way to address your question indirectly, Mr. Harmon, would be to say whether 100% premium is the right percentage premium or not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And when was the last time that was done? On the water, you said three years ago, Pam, is that what you said? Okay, all right, okay, I'm getting this brain together here. Okay, any other questions or comments before the vote? If not, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, raise a right hand. All those opposed, same sign. What was that count?
Five, two.
Five, two, okay, thank you. Continue on Jeff.
Madam Chairman, I don't know if it would be, we're gonna flip to expenditures, but it would be appropriate to pause here to see if there's any other question, we have not proposed any other revenue increases specifically in the general fund, because once we get below franchise fees, the increases that we would be talking about would have to be pretty significant to add up to a material amount of dollars, so if we're comfortable leaving general fund revenues behind, at least outside of property taxes, then we flip the page and talk about expenditures.
Okay. Councilman Celine?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, before we go on.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted, the letter that we had today dated July 26th, and it said that we are 6.5 million deficit, budget deficit, and then the letter on June 25th said that revenues, expenditures exceed projected revenues by more than 5.6 million. So why is there such a difference between that letter in June and this letter as far as our deficit?
We had two changes in the intervening period, one was the change in the KPNF funding rate, the pension rate for police and firefighters, which was worth an estimate of $500,000, and then the other item was the $120,000 that was just restored back from the transient guest tax fund to the general fund.
So that's 700,000, it's one, there's a difference of 1 million there, what's that composed of?
I probably rounded, I probably rounded in the letter. Yeah, we were, we started the day 6.538 billion to the bad, and I'll update the tally as we're talking here.
Okay, 'cause it was 5.6 back in June 25th, and now it's 6.5, and I, why is it so different?
There were a lot of other items, I think you just made up the two there as much.
Right.
Okay, all right, Jenny, did you have something on the last vote?
Yes, I apologize, I thought I saw Ms. Keller's hand go up, she was parting, I thought it was a yes vote, so the vote is four, two, one, four, four, two against, and one extension.
Oh, okay, I guess I, that, okay, all right, all right.
Deputy Mayor? Just to clarify, the vote on the transient guest tax, the record, that was a $120,000 transfer and no definition of where it came from, correct?
I thought the guest transit.
That, transient guest tax transfer, but not which line item that $120,000 came out of, correct? I just wanted to clarify for the record.
Okay, so the correction on the vote was, was which one?
The increase the gas and what, franchise fee.
The what?
No, no.
Hold on, hold on, Karen, okay, what? Okay, let's do this, Jenny, which one are you missing, babe?
I'm missing the water and wastewater.
You're missing the water and the wastewater? On the water and wastewater vote, can we clear, go, start with Karen and clarify your vote, that's all I want you to do, and then, Jenny?
I apologize, I was trying to get the one before.
It's not, not a problem. Okay, so the water and the wastewater, is that the one that we're unsure of? Karen, can you clarify your vote?
I did not vote.
You have to vote.
I abstained.
You abstained? Yes. Everhart's a yes. Michelle? Ortiz is a yes. Schwartz?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Yes? Richard Harmon, on the wastewater and water, what was your vote? Were you a no?
No.
Okay, you got that, Jenny? Okay. And that did not pass, correct? That was four?
Didn't pass.
Four, two, one? Don't we need a, at least? Okay, tell you what we're gonna do, we're gonna take a five-minute break, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then when we come back and when we vote, let's make sure that Jenny tells us yes or nay before we put our hands down, that would help her. Okay, let's take a five-minute vote, or five-minute break, good lord, five-minute break, everybody.
Well, yes, I'm a five-minute.
I need something. All right. All right, let's proceed on.
Madam Chairman, thank you to Mrs. Schwartz, you caught me a little off guard because I'd made modifications to my spreadsheet, so let me tell you exactly, and I apologize for my lazy rounding, let me tell you exactly where we started and exactly where we stand. So, based upon our recommended budget and projected revenues for next year, we started the day $6,273,000 to the bad, and based upon the committee's actions this morning, that gap is down to $4,408,000.
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yep, so we started the day at a negative $6,273,000, as we sit at this moment, based upon committee actions this morning, that number, and this also includes, by the way, the committee's action on Monday night related to downtown Topeka, we sit at $4,408,000 deficit.
Okay, great.
Could we ask him to translate that into mils?
4.5, 4.55 is our gap at the moment.
Mils?
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay, let's proceed on.
So on the expenditure side of the page, the first item on this list relates to non-union pay increases, which we had a conversation about a moment ago, we've estimated that the incremental cost from 2013 to 2014 for non-union pay increases to be $1.6 million. The, what we included in the budget was for most employees who are non-union, a 1% increase in the rates and a one-step increase, so on their anniversary date, if they're eligible to move a step, that they would do that. We do have a group of employees that don't have steps in their pay plan, for them, the budget increase is 2%. My, Pam's nodding, so that, that's where we stand. Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I would like to make a motion that we do not touch the raises of our staff.
If we can do a negative motion, I second it. Since this is informal chat, can we do that?
No, I think what would be better is to, if you would go ahead and make a motion to do that, to eliminate them, and if you don't want that, then you vote no. That would be a lot cleaner. Okay, if I can get you to do that?
She doesn't want to do it.
Or you don't have to, I mean, you know, it's just, it's just if we can keep the wording and clarify your vote. Okay?
Okay, then.
You don't have to, there's other.
It's in there. Okay, yes, I would like to have a motion to have no action on this line item.
Okay, there's, there has been, that's their note, that's not any of our notes, but there's been a motion to have no action on this, can I get a second? Can I get a second? Second, it fails, okay, we're back on that elimination of non-union pay increase.
Deputy Mayor, can we clarify, is there a need for us, this is some proposals from the staff, do we need to take action on these, or can we simply move on if we don't want to deal with them?
We can move on, but we do need to move on, okay, we need, if we're not ready to vote on that yet, let's just, let's just make, you know, let's just say move on, we all agree and we'll move on. We've got, we've got a couple council members that are gonna have to leave, I think we've had great discussion, but we need to move on, if we're not, just not ready to do that yet, okay? So what can I hear from the floor?
Move on.
Move on, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Are we all ready to move on on this issue?
Yes.
Okay, next issue?
The next issue is the one I discussed preliminarily Monday night, which is, we have this retirement reserve fund where we set money aside to pay for final payouts of accrued leave for employees as they leave the city, we do that in a separate fund so that we don't have kind of unexpected budget management issues within individual departments or other funds. We expect to have, well, what we see is the amount of full retirement eligible employees over the remainder of this year and next year is significantly higher than it is over the subsequent few years, our recommendation was to effectively borrow funds at the debt market to smooth out the cost impact of these retirement items over time. The benefit of that is we can reduce the general fund contribution to this fund in the short term, and in the long term, end up basically about where we would have been had we been cash funding these all along, with the exception of the cost of the interest. The example I gave you on Monday night was borrowing $5.5 million with level repayment over five years, at an interest cost of around $250,000 in the aggregate. So basically, this item says, are you willing to accept some incremental cost in order to generate some smoothing in the payment of these costs over time, which would give us some budget relief in the general fund in the short run.
Motion or move on, Councilman Harmon?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, it's been moved and seconded by Councilwoman Michelle. Discussion, Karen, quick discussion.
I'm gonna vote against it, I don't want to borrow to pay just this bump in the retirement reserve, I'd rather us deal with it and then move on in the next years.
Thank you, Councilman Nathan, did you have comment?
What was the difference between if we borrow to fund this, the difference in this year's budget between smoothing it or paying it? It's a half million dollars, it's what you see on this item, from the general. Okay, that's the value. That's the incremental change, that's correct. Okay, so we would be paying $6 million or? Well, we don't have any idea how much we'll actually pay, but, so what we do is, as a matter of course, we charge individual departments a percentage of their salaries, they make that contribution from their budget into this fund, so what we would be doing is funding that fund instead with borrowed money and reducing the amount of the contribution from general fund departments in exchange, and then having that change from year to year of the contribution rate be smooth rather than a spike and a drop and a spike and a drop. Okay, so we just move that general, the department's general fund contributions to the tune of $500,000 off of the budget into debt? Correct. Okay. And then pick those back up over time? Over time. In a more measured manner, that's right. That's what I had.
Okay. Councilwoman Celine?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, what was the interest?
If we borrowed 500 and, I'm sorry, $5 million, $500,000 today and paid that back over five years at current market rates, my estimate would be around $250,000 in interest cost, over the five years.
Plus $80,000 in fees. Something like that.
Yeah, that's a good estimate. That's really inclusive in that repayment amount.
Is there any other questions, concerns, or comments? Councilman Nathan?
So the $80,000 is in the 250, or the 320? Or 330? It's in the, well, it's in addition to the interest cost. Yes. Good.
So 330.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, same sign? Okay, thank you, next.
The next item on your list relates to outside agency funding, I know the council's gonna have a conversation about that or your presentations on Monday, I did reflect the committee's action Monday night to reduce funding for DTI by $75,000, unless you all want to reopen that conversation at the moment, it might be worthwhile to wait on the balance of that.
Okay, motion, move on? Move on, is everybody in agreement to move on?
We'll do it that Monday night.
Can I get a vote, I'm moving on?
Move on.
Okay, let's move on. Next one? Next one?
So the next one, Madam Chair, is a partial reduction in the budget for the franchise fee rebate program, the total budget for that is around $130,000 without looking, we're suggesting a reduction of $35,000 in recognition of a streamline or an outsource or rework of that program. One of the, I mentioned earlier that the average payment to individuals under that program is $70 a year, so you can imagine that any amount of administrative activity on our part dramatically increases the cost of that program. Pam mentioned to me there's some individuals that receive $5 a year under that program, we send 12 checks to them over the course of the year, and we've spent $1 to give them $1, just in the postage alone. So, we have some ideas for streamlining that program on the administrative side, to potentially use some creative ideas like identifying the folks that qualify under that program, making one payment a year, potentially using automated clearing funds transfers, if folks have bank accounts that are set up for that, and I think we can bring a proposal back to the council over the course of the next few months to allow us to continue that program in full, related to the money that goes out the door to individuals, and streamline what it costs and how much time it takes for us to administer that.
I'm just gonna be real frank, I'm not ready to outsource that program yet, and I know we just raised, you know, we're just asking for a percent on the franchise fees, and so I, I'm not ready to outsource, I want to keep it in-house, and that's just my comments on that. Richard?
For the sake of moving ahead, I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and outsource that, provided with the assumption we are not doing away with the franchise fee program, but I think if we outsource it, I think that's sending a message to administration that we're wanting to see that program streamlined, become more efficient in how we administer it for the public, so, that's my motion.
Okay, there's been a motion on the floor?
I'm gonna second that.
There's a motion and second, discussion?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, I know the state has a, it's some program that if it's under $10, they won't process the refund, and I think we ought to look into that, that if it, you know, whether it builds up then and you process it at a later date, but to and you process it at a later date, but to send out $5 checks is ridiculous.
Or $1 checks.
Or $1 checks.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I mean, I would encourage that, I mean, if we are gonna outsource it, we still have some kind of policy that says if it's a certain amount, it's not gonna be processed. Because it's more administrative fees to do that.
Right, and I think my concern is I've seen this outsourced stuff, and then they come back and then they want a fee because we've given it to them. And that's what I do not want to see, because the people that receive this, they really rely on it. And they're the older, the low to moderate income people. So that's why I want to keep tabs on it. Nathan?
When we say outsource, I mean, what you just talked about was not outsourcing, you talked about changing the process and making it more efficient. What exactly are we outsourcing?
Well, I would, I would say outsource slash streamline, I think there's, what we'd like is the opportunity to come back with some proposals to amend this program in such a way that we keep the core of the program, but trim down dramatically our costs of executing the program, which might include things like not making payments for very small dollar amounts or changing the administrative way that we verify income and those kinds of things, which are really, really burdensome today. So, I guess without, without foreclosing the opportunity to keep it in or send it out, this is really more of a streamlining, which could include an outsource if the council approved it.
But we're talking about outsourcing things like direct deposit or that not outsourcing the management of the program?
It could, it could be, it could be that there is an outside agency that can more efficiently, for instance, if the council decides that we need income verification, do income verification and those kinds of things.
But the thing of it is, they all have to bring their income taxes forward to prove, right? And their bills to prove, they have to be, am I correct, Pam? They have to, they have-
The process today is insanely burdensome, they-
We could streamline that, but to outsource it, I will not approve of that, I will not.
I guess what I, I guess what I would pose to you today is, I think there's the opportunity to cut $35,000 out of the budget on the administrative side of this program without compromising the core of the program and without holding you to a decision today about whether the city's going to administer this itself or administer it through a contract.
Jeff, it's $35,000, it's not that much.
I understand.
But it's a whole lot to that, my low to moderate income people, our constituents.
But they don't see this money.
It's-
They don't see this $35,000, we're not talking about changing the money that goes into people's pockets, we're talking about changing the costs we incur to execute the program. So the other-
And we just, and we just asked for an increase.
The other $80,000 that-
Me and you can fight about this all day long, but I am not approving this.
I'm not fighting with you, I'm completely agreeing. What I want, what I want to make clear is the core of the program, the money that goes out the door to individuals would not be touched with this budget proposal.
Right. But you're talking about outsourcing.
I'm potentially, I'm talking about not spending $1 to spend $3, which is what we do today.
Okay, that's all right. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Just a clarification, is this franchise fee rebate, we've got the water return fund that we do, and then is that part of this franchise fee rebate? Or, I mean, is this gas, electric, and water?
This would, this part that's in the general fund is just for gas and electric. The water department pays the cost for the water rebate program. So what you're dealing with is actually the gas and electric.
Is there an opportunity to combine those, I mean, it's the same people?
Well, we do combine in our production, in our process, and we would continue to do that, but as far as what the $35 or $35,000 is for, it's what's in the general fund. It's the cost that we put in the general fund to pay for the administration of this program.
But are we currently duplicating our work? I mean, are we checking them out on the water and checking them out on the gas and electric?
The general fund side, we verify income, we get the applications, we do all that front work, and then we turn that information over to water, and they deal with how much on their water bill based on what you set up as parameters for the water rebate. So we do all the pre-work for water, and then we give it to water to calculate on the bill.
Well, I hope that in the, just conversationally, that we can combine these two administratively. If it's, I don't remember what the motion is, if it's important to have the motion say streamline this process instead of outsource, I'm fine with that, I certainly support the rebate program, but certainly support making it less costly to administer.
Nathan?
Pam, this, just clarify for me, they're different because we are the water company, and we're not, is that right? I mean, we're not Westar, that's where the difference is, is that we do the billing for that, and Westar and Kansas Gas do the billing for the other two, is that correct?
What's in the general fund as far as the refund part is just for the gas and electric rebates.
Because, because we don't control those accounts.
And the water fund pays for the rebate to the customer for the water side. They actually get a credit on their bill.
And that's all done internally because we do the water?
They should have to just apply once.
And that's all they have to do.
Okay.
That's currently all they do, is they do the same paperwork for all three.
All right, there's a motion on the floor? Ginny, can you restate the motion?
That would be to motion to approve the outsourcing of the franchise fee rebate program with the assumption of not getting away with the franchise fee program and administration to streamline the process.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Next one?
Next item on the list, and just to provide some context before we go to this one, would be the elimination of 25 FTEs in the police department. Again, when we looked at what the budget gap was and each department's individual share of that, we asked departments to come back with ideas to get there for both police and for fire, which is the next item on this list. We're, the cuts are significant enough that we would be talking about significant staff reductions. So that's what these next two items are.
Move on.
Move on.
Move on.
Okay, all those in favor of moving on on the elimination on the police, 25?
Yes.
Move on.
Okay. All those in favor of moving on, raise your right hand? High, raise your right hand, high. Okay, we're moving on.
I think the city manager should get to speak out with them.
Okay, Karen, I've got this, Karen, I've got this. We've got so much time, we've got to move on. If we're gonna, if the council has voted to move on, the discussion, we can't have that discussion yet, okay? And that's what we've just voted on. Okay, elimination of the fire?
Move on.
All those who move on, all those in favor of moving on, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Karen, are you voting?
I'm sorry?
Are you voting to move on or to oppose?
Move on.
Move on, okay, Ginny, does the move on have it? Okay, we'll move on. There, to me, to me, on those, both of those, there's a lot of unanswered questions that I have that I haven't presented to the city manager, but I will. Next one, Jeff?
Next item, Madam Chair, is the return of janitorial services for this building and one other, without me reading, was it City Hall? Oh, sorry, I'll look, I'll look while you're talking. From contract services to staff services, the idea being both to improve service as well as to reduce costs.
We did hear that, if you guys remember in our presentation, we did hear that, the police department, how they complained to, I think it was Mike, wasn't it Mike? Didn't you give us that presentation, how this building is dirty? So if anybody doesn't remember that, and they just thought if we had a full-time person then we used to, it would be a lot better. So, what's, do we want to move on or vote on it?
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Nathan, second by Elaine. Okay, all those in, are, it's been moved and seconded, is there discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, next one?
That was LEC City Hall Holiday Court.
Yep, I remember that, okay.
Next item is the elimination of one plan review FTE in the Public Works Department. This would result in one layoff.
One layoff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor, or any questions, or a motion? Move on or motion? Move on or motion?
Move on.
Okay, move on, if you agree with that, raise your right hand? Okay, move on, next one?
Next item would result in the elimination of one construction inspector position in Public Works, also would result in one layoff.
And how many inspectors do we have now?
Seven.
We have seven, that would bring us down to six?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, all those move on or vote on it?
Move on.
Move on, if you're in favor of moving on, raise your right hand? Okay, we're moving on.
Madam Chair, next item would result in the elimination of one surveyor position, this would also result in one layoff.
Okay, move on, or how many surveys do we have?
Four.
Four?
Move on.
Move on or vote?
Move on.
Move on, raise your right hand, please, so I can clarify, thank you. Eliminate seasonal street employees, Jeff?
This, this would result in reduced temporary staffing being available during high-peak demands related to street painting equipment, sign maintenance, traffic signal maintenance, and those kinds of things. It wouldn't result in the elimination of FTEs, but it would result in full-time city employees, but would result in a reduction in part-time city employees.
Move on or, Mr. Harmon? Motion to approve? Is there a second, we have a motion on the floor? I'll second it for discussion, is there discussion?
How would this impact us in overtime?
Primarily since I'm saying, I don't think Ron could make it today. Oh, there you are, oh, yeah.
I can't forecast whether it will significantly increase overtime, but in an emergency situation, it may very well increase overtime costs. Staff has advised me that they thought what we offered was workable, though, without increasing costs.
Thank you, Ron, Karen?
That was my question about cost.
Okay, thank you, there's a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right, move on?
The next item is from, Madam Chair, is from the Planning Department, this is reducing the cost of a zoning inspector. This is effectively a downgrade in the classification of a position and taking advantage of salary savings. My understanding is this would not result in any, in any new, I'm sorry, in any layoffs.
Thank you. Nathan?
If I remember correctly, this was, this is a realized cost already?
Yes.
So, we're not really-
It's an easy one.
We can vote against it and it, we still get it?
Yes, yes, sir. That's fair enough.
Are we gonna move on, are we gonna vote on this, Councilman Harmon?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Second, moved by Harmon, second by Michelle, all those in favor, raise your right hand? Okay, move on?
Next item, Madam Chair, is the outsourcing of a guest services program to FOTS. My understanding is that this would still require modifications to the city code to permit us to do this, maybe Chad can speak to that if there's any questions on that item. And I know that Brendan briefed you about this, about this approach.
Brendan's been trying to catch up with me to meet with him, and I haven't done so. So Chad, do you want to just briefly give us just a little, or is Mary here? Is Mary here? Mary Feeny?
Brendan.
Chad, do you know, or do you want to? Yeah, because there's some legal things that we need to do. Do we want to move on at this point, or come back to it?
Move on.
Harmon?
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, it's subject to further review if legal has a problem with it.
Okay, and I'll try to get with him, I've been in meetings all week, I apologize.
I understand.
And I'll try to get with Brendan this week. There's been a motion on the floor, but Councilman Harmon, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? Okay, legal?
Yes, ma'am, next item on the list is the reorganization of the legal department. I'll let the city attorney speak to that, if there's any questions.
Suggestions for reorganization of the legal department, it would eliminate one FTEs, one of those FTEs is the vacant position, that's a part-time position to eliminate it, and if we further consolidate, we'll eliminate one further FTE, so.
It eliminates one and a half, is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, is that all you want to say? Was that one, the receptionist on third floor, or?
That's if we, if we combine, but right now, as it is, without combining, we can eliminate one point FTEs, which will save about $100,000, and one of those is a vacant position, so we're eliminating a part-time position right now, that is.
You're okay with this? Okay, any other questions? Motion or move on? Councilman Hiller?
Move to approve.
Move to approve?
And thank you.
Moved and seconded by Michelle, all those in favor, raise your right hand? All those opposed? It's that lawyer thing. All right, court?
Madam Chair, this item is a proposal to outsource contracted security for the municipal court. This would result in the layoff of four currently filled positions.
Okay. Is there any questions, concerns regarding this? I did ask Honorable Judge about this, and he said, he said he only has three at a time because one's always on vacation or sick or gone or whatever, but he threw that in his budget, and I don't think he had an issue with that, so do we want to make a motion or move on?
I'll move to approve.
Karen moves to approve, is there a second? Moved and seconded, discussion?
I thought, I thought we use police officers for security, is that?
No.
They have their own?
We use a special class of employees called public safety officers, PSOs.
And Chief, can you, can you jump over the crowd and come up here real quick? How, because I have this question myself, I do see an officer down there when we're, when we're scanning in, you know, when we go through the metal detectors, I do see an officer there, is that just a courtesy? And then I see one up in the back, how do we, because I know those other guys are specifically for municipal court. But how does the guy get there that, that when we're scanning here and he's standing there, and then, and then you always have one or two in the back? Can you explain to us that process, please?
Yes, the PSOs are the protective services officers that are the municipal court's security. They have a function during the day during the court.
And that's all they do?
Correct, the court sets the rules on the security of the court by Supreme Court procedure. Open carry weapons into buildings, all that doesn't really apply because the courts have ruled that the court, the municipal court, can set its security procedures. So they are the court's security. They are part of the, the PSOs are part of the FOP contract, the FOP negotiates for the PSOs, but they are a separate classification of employees, they just happen to be covered in that contract. The city's taken the position that we can outsource that as a city if we choose to do that. The FOP attorneys may have a different opinion of that, but we have put them on notice that we can outsource that if the city council chooses to do so. The people that you see there in the evening, one of those is a PSO who's assigned that function.
Correct.
The other's a police officer who's off-duty, who's hired for approximately an hour to get the people into the council meeting through the magnetometers and the security procedures to get them into the council meeting. That will stay in place because if we don't, we have the whole issue of open carry in buildings and all those things that we have exempted the city out of until the first part of the year. So the officer that you see there in uniform is paid off-duty for an hour, the PSO is assigned there. In the courtroom, I mean, excuse me, in the council chambers, that is a police commanding officer who rotates the- that is a police commanding officer who rotates the, who we assign to the sergeant-at-arms duty in the court by rotation. Those individual commanding officers are not compensated to be there. They're salary employees, and we rotate that among all council meetings.
Right.
I'm there because I'm a department director, and I've asked to been, or asked to be there as part of the department director staff. So you see myself and another commanding officer there that are not being compensated. The downstairs uniform officer is being compensated for an hour to get it going, approximately an hour. And the PSO who's there throughout is the court officer.
Okay, thank you, Chief. You might want to stay there for a second. Michelle?
Yes, so if we do eliminate these four positions, then how will the municipal court have security?
They will outsource that through the procurement and contracts process and hire a company to provide that security during the court, during the business of the court.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Any other questions or concerns? Richard?
I'd like to raise a question. Well, how much does that get us?
The judge has estimated the savings from the contracting opportunity to be $115,000, $114,000. That's the net, yeah, that's the net. Yes, sir.
Karen? Aren't there police officers in the courtroom during the day anyway as well?
They're there, but they're there to testify in court, to respond to subpoena, or they have court...
There's nobody that's there all day.
They have business during, yeah, they have business during the day of the court. And if those officers are not on duty, they're being paid court overtime to show up.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns or comments? Chad, you're looking at me.
Well, I was just having, in municipal court, from our prosecution function, there's not always police when they're in a code docket, when there's certain dockets. There's not, unless the officer is subpoenaed to be there to testify for a trial. They're not necessarily gonna be there because there are large sections in that day, where police officers aren't there just because they're not subpoenaed.
Okay. Now that we have a clear understanding, is there any other questions for the Chief? Thank you, Chief. All right, we have a motion. Jenny, is that correct?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. All right. Finance?
Madam Chair, the next item on this list is the elimination of the budget manager position. This is an added position that's included in the manager's fiscal 14 recommendation. I added this to my potential cut list for two reasons. One, it's vacant, which makes it easy at least to cut. And the second reason is that finance department is basically only staff. So that's really our only, our only choice. That all said, this community is of a size where it needs a dedicated budget person. And you've seen the results of that over the last couple of budget cycles for council members who have been here. When you do budget by committee, the information is not as good. The understanding of the organization is not as good, and it's challenging. I might offer that there's a way to keep the function and reduce the cost by potentially looking at a lower classification rather than a manager level to look at a dedicated budget person who might be more of an analyst-type level than a budget manager position, something like that. So there's potentially some middle ground there.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Move on or motion? Councilman Harmon has made a motion to approve or adopt. Is there a second? Is there a second? I'll second it. All those, or Elaine?
No, I was gonna second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Elaine. All those in favor? Discussion, I'm sorry.
I mean, I want to endorse what Jeff said. I mean, we, I think as an organization, we have suffered by not having a dedicated budget person. We first came on, we had Jim Lineford. And since he retired, I do think we've had a void that is becoming more and more current. I agree that, no disrespect to our current finance folks, you've done a great job. But I kind of like that idea that Jeff floated about maybe bringing that position in perhaps a little lower level. But that, my vote is fair with this, I still think we need to have a dedicated budget.
But this is to cut the position?
Come again?
This line is to cut that position.
It's not filled at the current time.
Correct.
But, what Jeff, Bob, was it, we could look at, I think, 2014 perhaps, but bringing, finding that position at a lower, a lower level, like a budget handling position. At a different time?
Yes, but we need some budget for that to include that position in 14. So if your, if your motion were to get the requisite number of votes, we would be talking about this for 15 rather than 14.
Right.
And I think we would probably need some time to develop, working with HR in terms of what you felt like you would need.
Councilman?
We're not gonna get that done in the next four weeks.
Councilman Nathan?
So, just to make sure I've got this right. If I vote yes on this, this motion, and this motion ends up being adopted into the budget eventually, we don't have the option of lowering, of bringing them in at a lower level?
Correct.
We're eliminating any option?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other discussion, comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All those opposed, same sign. Okay? Finance?
The next item, Madam Chair, is the reduction of one FTE in either payroll or purchasing. It would, we would make that decision as a game time as we got closer to year end. Hopefully, with the implementation of the new time and attendance system, we will create the space to do this in payroll. My sense is this would result in the, in one layoff, though.
Okay. Move on or motion? Move on or motion?
Move on, it's fine.
Move on, raise your right hand? Motion? Okay, we'll move on. HR?
Next item for HR is the elimination of one FTE. This is a filled position. This would result in a layoff.
Motion or move on?
Move on.
Move on.
Okay. We'll move on. IT?
Next item is information technology. I would propose to you that this is an easy one. You heard Mr. Bismill talk about this. This is simply time shifting a cost to next budget year when we'll have some capacity come into his budget by virtue of the elimination or the payoff of a lease on the loss in system.
Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand? You good, Jenny?
Six.
Mm-hmm.
Six in favor.
Mm-hmm. All right, next one?
Madam Chair, the next item is reduced contractual services in the executive department. Do you want to speak to that item? I think we're comfortable since we proposed that, that we would be okay with that reduction. Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded?
Second.
Michelle? All those in favor, raise your right hand? Next?
Next item, Madam Chair, would result in a reduction in the classification of the cost of the deputy city manager position, generating a savings of approximately $48,000.
Okay. Motion to move or move on or, move on or motion? Karen?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to approve? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Raise your right hand?
Discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry?
I just wanted to get the city manager's recommendation on that again. That's your...
Well, I support this.
You support that?
This is consistent with our plans.
Okay.
And I do appreciate that, city manager, because you can always, you know, we did that before. We had a city manager, and he had one of our department heads as also deputy manager. And I believe that in our company, you can have that, and you can find that without raising costs. And to the taxpayers, you know, if you feel that you need that.
Deputy Mayor? It's my belief that we need to continue to flatten out this organization and push, really just continue to have people who are providing a service. And while, they're significant value to management, but we need to continue to look at how to do it most efficiently.
And I appreciate that. I just wanted to let our new people know that there's other ways to accomplish having a deputy city manager without raising costs. And you're right, Jim, it does, we all have to give, give or take somewhere. So I just want to publicly say, I appreciate that. Okay, there's a motion on the floor. A second? Is that the end of discussion?
Yeah.
Did you have more? Okay.
I thought you were looking for a second. Nevermind, it's sort of been seconded.
It has been moved and seconded, right? Okay. All those in favor? All right.
Madam Chair, the last item on here with a dollar figure, I would ask the committee not to take action today, and here's why. In the manager's recommended budget, we presented the three approaches. All revenue, all cuts, and the mix of both. In the mix of both category, this was the balancing item. These were the expenditures necessary to get us from the revenue enhancements related to public safety and the cuts necessary to get us to a zero-dollar balance. I think it would be appropriate to leave this item on the table for now as we go through the discussions. These, thank you.
I appreciate that. Okay, that's easy. Okay. Did anybody have, are we through then? We've gone through all that you guys have suggested?
We're through our list. I'm happy to give you an update where we stand today, if that would be helpful for the group.
Okay, that would be very helpful.
So we started the day, as I mentioned, with a deficit of $6.27 million. Where we stand today, based upon committee action, is a deficit of $3.38 million.
Three point three, can you repeat that?
$3.38 million, which is a mill levy equivalent of approximately three and a half.
Three and a half. Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Harmon?
That figure again is $3 million?
$3,378.
One more time, Jeff? For the old people like me.
$3,378,000.
Okay, all right. Are we good?
Which is three and a half mills.
Three and a half mills, yes, ma'am.
Okay, are we good? Is everybody good? Did anybody bring today any cuts that they would like to propose or share with the council at this, at today's meeting? Councilman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not necessarily cuts. What I would like to do, after talking to several former city leaders, is to look at if there's any way to transfer from the water funds temporarily until we get this, the deficit completely. So I don't know if that can start to be looked at, that the ending balances are not so high that we have, that we use some of that funds instead of mill increases.
Jeff is referring to Jim. Jim might be referring to...
Jeff's referring to Jim. I strongly would ask that we don't do that. That is exactly what has gotten us into this problem, is we continue to kick the can down the road. We don't deal with expenditure issues or the mill levy issues. We have increased expenditures in the city without coming up with revenues. The reason we're here today, and the problem is so significant, is because we've done exactly that thing. And it would just be one more, one more step in that process. So as the, as the executive of this organization, I would, I would ask that we don't go down that road.
You know, I personally had thought about that, too, and I think it would be great to do that. But I was also reminded that, let's take the wastewater, that we might be sued by some of the rate payers that pay that, you know, to balance that budget. And so I think I talked to Jeff about kind of looking into that. And that's why I haven't contacted you is because the wastewater is paid by, didn't you, those in Shawnee County? Am I correct or?
We have, we have customers that are beyond the corporate boundaries of the city.
Of the city. And they thought that the rate payers, they could see the rate payers. And that's who I'm talking about, the ones that are outside, come and saying, that's not fair, or that's not what it was intended for.
Madam Chair, under, we have, for borrowing purposes, the water, the stormwater, and the wastewater utilities are considered one utility. That's how our bondholders view the utilities, even though we account for those separately. We have covenanted to our bondholders, and we've entered into contracts with them, that says that that utility system is closed. What that means is the revenues come in from the services that are provided to that utility. They're used to pay the operations and maintenance costs of the utility. The balance that's left is available for the bondholders for the payment of debt. And once the debt is paid, anything that's left has to remain in the system. So we don't have any ability, under the covenants with our bondholders, to take a million dollars or whatever the number is that's left and just remove it from those funds.
Karen?
This has come up before. There's a couple reasons why I strongly think we, A, probably can't do it, and B, shouldn't do it. In terms of the can't do it, when it's come up before, we've had city attorney and staff pull us the references of whatever they're called in the city, a terra, for the ordinance that establishes that utility. And what that language says is that we don't have the right to take money out of that utility unless the utility doesn't need it. If it's extra money, and we all know clearly that all three of our utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater, need substantial capital investment as well as maintenance. So there is no extra money in those funds. In fact, we've got a lot of staff working very hard to figure out how to set up long-term both maintenance and capital replacement plans for those utilities. So I don't think we can, and related to that, I don't think we should. One of the good things that I would like to sustain is that when I first came on council, there are three utilities included. Water pollution control, which is stormwater, had gotten itself to the point where they were doing almost everything with cash. And that's 100% bang for the buck out of our rate payers. Every time we borrow money, and there's a substantial amount of borrowing going on in water and sewer. But as much as we can keep those, that fund healthy so that they're able to spend cash on the things that are both planned or that come up as disasters, which as we know, happens, the sounder that fund is and the better service we're providing for those rate payers. So I know that we're gonna be seeing, hopefully sometime soon, those long-term plans from staff. We're trying to protect rates, and we just, we need those funds for that purpose. If there's some temporary borrowing, you know, to cover, like temporary expenses, to save money, I can see that, but not to just pull money out of the utilities for general fund. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Elaine?
Thank you. Then as a point of clarification, and Jeff, I guess this question is for you. We're using the fund to, for infrastructure repairs or whatever? I mean, is the reserve funds, the ending balances, there to help with the infrastructure of the water programs?
Yes, sir.
So did we not have a half-cent sales tax increase that also went to pay for those water main breaks and everything? So none of that money from the half-cent sales tax goes for infrastructure repair?
Not for the water and sewer utilities. It is specifically directed toward street maintenance and repair.
So when we have an infrastructure issue with a water main break, that's coming out of the water fund?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And in fact, we partnered that up with the half-cent sales tax program so that we were beginning to spend more out of those utility funds to get ahead of those water main repairs under the street. So A, they wouldn't break, and B, it was done. And so we're drawing on that in what's a pretty responsible way.
So is any of that covering all the overtime that we have because of those water main breaks?
The water utility covers those overtime repairs as well.
That's good to know.
What Councilmember Hiller is talking about is this idea of coordinating improvements, because nothing makes a public works director want to throw up a little more than to have a construction crew, a water crew, go out to a brand-new street and dig a cut to repair a water main break. So what we're trying to do is to say, hey, we're gonna repair these three blocks of street. Let's put new water main in before we put the new street in and look at the sewer at the same time if it's under there, so that we avoid that situation.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Is there any cuts or any discussion before we tie this up? Councilman Harmon?
What's the, I know we have a budget meeting Monday night to hear from the various insurance agencies. What's the rest of the budget calendar looking like?
Well, this was the last meeting for the budget hearing that we've scheduled, but it looks like we might want to schedule another one. You know, I know we moved on on a lot of things, and I did that for one reason. To move on, basically. There's no sense of sitting there hashing about if we're gonna cut it or not, if we're not gonna. But at some point in time, we're gonna have to make that decision so that the city manager has some type of direction. I will take the elimination of the police department. I have not had my questions answered. I, I have not had my questions answered, but I haven't submitted them, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's my fault. I don't want staff, you to think it's staff. But I have some questions before I can make a vote on that, okay? And so, but at some point in time, we're going to have to take that or we're going to have to find it somewhere else in the budget. And, and I know that there's, it's, it's tough. This is probably the toughest one that I've ever had. Maybe it's because we, we're not putting that Band-Aid on it this year, but anyway. So, do you guys want to? I guess you can let Jenny know if, if we, do we want another budget here? We have time.
I think one more.
We have time. And, and I know it, it's going to be what it's going to be. Some people are just not going to come and it's, it's whatever you guys want to do, but I, I would like to see us maybe come back one more time and present some more cuts. But that's up to you guys. If not, we're going to do it that evening until we get the balance, the budget balanced. So, I want everybody to know, it's got to be done whether we do it at a budget hearing or whether we, whether we do it at a council meeting, but it's, it's, it's up to you guys what, what you want to do.
If I may, I would, I would encourage us to schedule another, at least one other budget meeting in addition to what we have scheduled for Monday. We looked a lot on the table, I understand why and I appreciate the way you kept, kept us moving, but we have the issue of social service funding. I want to get squirt, squirt around the, the allocation of the remaining transient guest tax funds. And then the, the items, the biggest budgetary items in terms of whether there's going to be a mill levy increase are going to be whether we're willing to accept any cuts in police and fire. And that's a discussion I think that probably deserves a meeting on, all it's on. So, I would hope that we would have at least one more. We have the time.
We have, we have Monday, we have the social services.
But that's, that's for presentation.
That's for presentations, yeah.
That's, that's for presentation.
And that's exactly, that's all it's going to be.
Oh, okay.
So, I, I think whether it's, it's away from today or whether it's, well, but...
Okay.
I, I think clearly there's some, some additional work that the budget committee needs and should do before we get to budget adoption.
Exactly.
I encourage you, ma'am.
Exactly. Okay, are you through?
Yes.
Okay. Michelle?
Thank you, Counselman Harmon. I, I really echo those sentiments because there, there are some very deep policy issues that I think that we have to discuss, especially pertaining to the funds for social services. I don't want to start a discussion now, but I will say that one of my concerns is that DTI is under an area that I don't feel it should be in. Maybe one of the discussions, and I know that that's going to be a discussion for later on, would be considering other funds such as economic development funds to go ahead and cover those expenses and, and allot for money that brings in money, which will also free the funds that we have already approved, that $400,000 for the social service agencies. So, we really need, do need time to look at these things at length.
Okay, city manager? I'm sorry, Richard, did you want to respond to that?
Well, along that, Karen sent me, if I can share this?
Sure. I promised it, I just thought it was too much for tonight's...
Yeah. Karen sent me a breakdown of the social service funding that I think was just very helpful in terms of identifying areas, I'm trying to word you about, but how the, the areas of, you know, like youth, social services, aging and whatnot, it's very helpful and I think it would be helpful for the entire committee to have that if you're willing to share it.
I'm happy to do that.
I, I think it would be, particularly as, as we're looking at the presentations on Monday, I think it'd be helpful to, to share it with the rest of the committee. I thought it was very good, I think you did a lot of good work on that. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Deputy Mayor, thank you very much. I want to tell you, we made significant progress today. We actually cut more out of the non-public safety funds than was our target. So, we, this was a good day and if anybody sees, I'm fairly, not, I have a grimace occasion...
All fuzzy, you're not a fuzzy guy, you said that.
Sometimes I grimace and, and, and I appreciate the way that this meeting has ended in terms of, of really focusing on what needs to happen. The city manager's budget did not ask for a cut to the police and fire budget. It asked for a mill levy increase to offset that. The mill levy increase that we would need today is less than what was actually asked and recommended, so that's a good thing. I, I really just wanted us, well, I want to be, I wanted us to make a decision as to whether we were going to cut or whether we're going to increase the mill, but I agree with you Deputy Mayor, there's some more questions that need to be asked. We will be fully prepared to talk about that and hopefully at the end of the next budget meeting, we will make a determination as to how we're going to proceed to, but I think today was a good day. I don't want, I don't think anybody should walk away from negative. We, we did a good job at addressing a lot of issues.
I appreciate that.
Just wanted to thank you Deputy City Manager because you really handled this meeting in such a fashion that it really kept us going and staying focused on what really matters.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I, one thing about me is if we're going to meet, let's meet, let's get through and let's make something happen. Let's don't sit here and stew about it. But, but again, I cannot reiterate, if you have any questions for staff, if you have any questions for Jim, go through your budget book and look to see what there is to cut or, or, or what we, what, what they're there for, whatever. It's very, we're getting down to the, the wire and, and you know, I, I appreciate your comments that it was a good day Jim. I know you wanted us to cut from day one and we just weren't prepared to do that, so I will poll everybody, maybe I won't, maybe I'll just set it for next, next Saturday. I'll get with, get with Jenny. Okay. It seems like we can kind of get a, a little bit more. Saturday's okay? Counselman Dela?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just have one question because at the beginning of the meeting, I was not familiar with the process and how this was all going. And towards the end, then I saw that some of the recommendations for the cuts, say from legal or from the courts or from your department, the 21 FTEs that were in the police and fire, were those recommendations from the department heads or was that a figure that you came up with?
Uh, Jim?
Deputy Mayor, Councilmember, these were, all of the cut recommendations come from the department heads. We talked to, during the, the chief's presentation, he talked specific of how he, how he would achieve that and, and with the fire chief, same thing.
And were any of those positions vacant positions like what we found today? Or they, were they all layoffs then?
But, but, but you have to remember one thing, they, each department head was asked to cut their budget by five percent. Okay? So, this is their budget and they had to cut it by five percent. So, that's the five percent cuts that they came back to the council to see.
Right.
Do they want it?
Well, I just want to know...
I'm just going to say, do they want it? They, probably not, but they had to look at it. Everybody had to look at five percent.
Right. And I think it was very stellar that we had many people say that they could live with, with the cuts. So, I was going to, I just wanted to get at the bottom line of the FTEs that were cut. Were there any vacant positions in those or?
I don't, I don't think so in the police department.
There's no, there's no free ones in police and fire.
In the police and fires, okay.
Because the police, we've cut those vacant positions for the last two or three years. Am I right Harmon or Pam? We've cut for so long, I don't think there is any vacant. But any, anyway...
Okay, thank you.
Don't hesitate to slow me down or stop me and get any questions or concerns that you have answered, okay? But because that's a recommendation, that doesn't mean that we have to accept it, okay? But any questions or concerns, get with Jim, get with staff, you know, because you have to feel, you have to vote on this and you have to feel comfortable with what you're voting on and what you're putting in and out. Karen?
Couple quick things. One, in terms of a clarification then, I appreciate this, I'm ready to stop, but, but none of us did bring forth any other suggestions. So, at this juncture, besides doing our homework as you say, well, once we set a date for the next meeting, that will be the time for all of us to bring forth any suggestions, which would be, could be cuts, but also there were some discussions along the way of enhancements and so people might have one that's either just an enhancement or a trade-off. That, this, this to be scheduled meeting would be the time for those.
Absolutely. And if you're going to bring it, please bring enough copies for everybody or give it to Jenny to bring enough copies for everybody. I, I don't think it's fair to bring one piece of paper and try to get us to vote on something that we can't read or, or that you're reading off to me because I'm old and, and I want to be able to read it and see it and I think it's just common courtesy.
Thank you.
Either they're going to vote it up or down. If we don't know the money figure, we can, Jeff I'm sure can figure it out or Pam, but, but I, I think we need to bring that, it's time to bring that to the table. We've heard discussions, we've had discussions, it's really time to get down to the nitty-gritty.
Just to clarify further on your advice there then, would you recommend that if people, let's say somebody has a number of suggestions, is it okay for people to roster those on one piece of paper or are you suggesting that there be a separate sheet for each one?
I would like everybody to have a copy of your cuts or your enhancements, whatever you propose.
However, people bring them, okay.
Whatever you propose.
Thank you.
I'd like everybody to bring that. Jenny, Jenny can do that, she's done it before. You, you just give her one copy and she can take care of the rest.
Then the two points to ponder that have emerged, one out of the Councilman Harmon's conversations earlier and one out of the newspaper this week, you know, as I tried to get the 10,000-foot view, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out where the big ticket items are that are coming out of this budget. The fact that we're spending a million dollars a year on Heartland Park really struck me and I appreciated Councilman Harmon bringing that up and then admonishing us to think about studying it in the future, but I'm thinking, I just feel like I need to think about that going into this final as well. So, that, that came out of our discussions. The other thing that struck me though was the point that the airport authority is, is raising taxes by a mill in order to keep two airports in Topeka, Kansas open. And I know that they get to do their own mill levy, but we appoint to that authority and, and you know, a raise in taxes of that level impacts our taxpayers and I just, I don't know if it's appropriate for us to have a conversation about that or to have a visit with them about that, but whether we need two airports and two towers and, and all of that and, you know, a big expansion to the runway all in the same year, just gave me some pause and if it was appropriate to mention it, I, I just felt like that was going to impact the overall mill levy and just wanted to throw that out.
Thank you. Michelle?
I'm going to steal from you Deputy Mayor and I'm going to say for the folks at home, I hope that today's meeting is a representation of our commitment as a body to look at every single thing and provide that we are making the necessary cuts. That it's not just us talking about the possibility of a mill levy increase. It is not that this body is sitting here idly thinking how we're going to raise the mill levy, it's that we're looking seriously at the impact that this is having on every single department and the services that you, our constituents, deserve. And that then, after we've done all these cuts and that we're evaluating everything, we're still proposing to have yet another meeting so that we can provide for you an accurate figure. It is not that we're arbitrarily raising the mill levy. I have gotten a lot of feedback with regards to that 11 number. We discussed in the beginning that that 11 number was not a reality and today, even though we cannot promise that after next Saturday's meeting, we're going to remain at a 3.5, what we're looking at today is a 3.5. So, I hope that today you look at this body and that you see that we are really working hard to deliver to you the cuts that we need so that we can optimize our services.
All right. Is there any other comments or questions? Jeff?
Madam Chair, I would, I would just offer to the council, if you have ideas for budget recommendations that you would like us to cast, we would be happy to do that in confidence. They're your cuts. We won't share them, but we certainly want to be able to provide you with the best quality of information that we can.
Right.
It's much easier for us to do that Wednesday of this week than it is next Saturday morning at 9:38.
Right. Do it as soon as possible is what he's saying, as soon as possible and because they have to have time to research it, so if we could, if we could do that. Is there anything else? Anything else? And, and I appreciate staff for showing up so diligently every Saturday morning. We, we understand. We, we truly understand. Anything else? If not, we have a meeting on Monday for social services for presentations and that's all it's going to be, is presentations.